Meeting of the Board of Education. Let's start with our Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, students. All right, we are so happy to be here tonight at Meads Mill with Mrs. Provo and Mr. Lambden leading the way for us tonight, along with our superintendent and our call team. If we could start with our roll call, that would be great.
Definitely. President McIntyre.
Here.
Vice President Campbell Voitelle.
Here.
Treasurer Stewart.
Here.
I'm here. Secretary Meyer. Trustee Frazier.
Here.
Trustee Mayberry.
Here.
Trustee Maurer.
Here.
All right, great, we are all here, thank you. Let's move forward then for our adoption of our agenda. I will turn that over to you, Dr. Campbell Voitelle.
Right. I bring motion 101, that the agenda be adopted as presented.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion properly presented by Dr. Campbell Voitelle, supported by Mr. Frazier. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I feel like we're out of practice. We had like two weeks off, so I feel a little rusty. All right, let's move on to our consent resolution items.
All right, I bring motion 102, that the board accept the consent items as follows. 5A, the minutes of the April 22nd, 2025 board meeting. 5B, overnight and out of state field trip request. One is the NHS Boys Hockey Camp in Glen Harbor, Michigan from July 28th through the 30th, 2025. And 5B2 is the NHS Boys Volleyball Tournament in Grand Rapids, Michigan from April 25th through 26th, 2025. 5C is the 2025-26 Livonia Career Tech Educational Cooperative Agreement. And 5D is the 2025-26 Special Ed Livonia Transition Program, LTP Cooperative Agreement. And 5E is the second reading and adoption of a set of policies, Policy 1102, the Firearms and Other Weapons, 2157, which is Curricular Animals, 3008, Safety and Security, 4123, Earned Sick Time, and 4141, Personal Communication Devices. 5F is Bill Warrants totaling $3,727,570.15. Support.
Okay, great, we have a motion properly presented by Dr. Campbell Voitelle and supported by Ms. Stewart. Our consent resolution items are different action items that we have seen under previous memorandums, and this is our second reading and the adoption of the policy, which we discussed a few weeks ago, and we also get the monthly bill warrant summary. So go ahead with a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, thank you. Next, we'll move on to our communications.
Yes, we have received our communications through MPSBOE at northfilsschools.org, as well as our Northville Youth Network April Program Report.
Wonderful, thank you.
I really liked seeing in the NYN report for the month, the programs that they're doing, their Wellness Wednesdays, but also, you know, previously in, you know, previous years, they were really focused on high school, and then they've been moving into the middle school, and now we're seeing the start of programs in K through 5, which I think is awesome, and so I'm, you know, just always grateful for the work that they do.
Sure. I've really been enjoying seeing their social media updates, too, really highlighting for the community everything that Northville Youth Network does, identifying their staff and really kind of amplifying that message around mental health, so thank you for, yeah, lifting that up. All right, next, we have our Meads Mill Middle School presentation. We're so excited to be here, and thank you so much for the warm welcome so far.
I heard at Tech, I don't need a mic, I have teacher voice, it's very loud, but I'll use it. So, welcome, I'm so happy to have you guys here. My name is Melissa Provo, I'm proud to serve as the principal here at Meads Mill. It's been my first year, and so I've been doing a lot of listening, getting to know the kids, the teachers, and the families, and we've just been having a great time, and it's, it's middle school in May, so we're rolling along. And so tonight, as Dr. Weber mentioned, we do have a large amount of our kids that are here tonight presenting, and our staff that will be heading to Washington DC in the morning, some of that, I guess I would call night, but they call morning. So after our presentation, I hope you'll excuse them as they kind of scoot out to be able to make it to the airport somewhere around 3:00 AM, so.
All right, so if we could pull up, okay.
All right, so, so I'm going to start tonight with something that I do with students, and it really kind of embodies my approach to the work here at Meads Mill and building a learning community here. So each time I meet with students at the beginning of each quarter, we do a class meeting, and we kind of talk about how things are going, what we need to work on, different things. This last marking period, we wrote thank you cards for our teachers that we distributed for teacher appreciation. So one of the things that we do there is I kind of walk students through a guided visualization, if you will, so trying to get them to understand what it means to be part of a community. So if you would humor me a little bit, so if you guys could close your eyes for me, and just take a deep breath in, and then out, and I want you to imagine yourself in a giant white room. So think the center court at Little Caesar's Arena, and you're standing there, and as you look around, you start to notice that there are doors. There are large doors, there are smaller doors, there are doors that have mosaic glass and are beautiful with the sun shining in, there are doors that maybe are a little bit smaller, more modest, some doors are cracked open just a little bit, some doors might have locks on them, some doors might seem scary, right? So in your brain, thinking about these doors as opportunities that we all hold open for each other as we go through our day-to-day here at Meads Mill. Time and place has set us here as members of this community, and we have responsibilities to each other. And so as we go through our presentation tonight, I want you to keep the theme of being part of a community in your mind, and we talk with kids all the time about holding doors open for each other. So if you want to open your eyes, so I asked AI to kind of create an image of this for me, and so this is kind of what we talk about, the kids, about making sure that we're creating positive experiences and lifting each other up and building this positive community, because each member of our community has something that they can do that no one else can do in the way that they're going to do it because of their experiences and their perspectives, and we need everybody. And so we talk a lot about keeping doors open and making sure that we, every student who comes through Meads Mill has every opportunity open to them. So we're going to break down the presentation into two parts tonight. We're going to talk about climate and culture and some of the wonderful work that we've been doing this year as we're building our new culture together, and then we'll talk about teaching and learning, and then we'll actually talk about our physical community, which is in a state of renovation right now. So we'll go ahead, we are going to have our Meads Mill Workforce present first, and so if we can, can I have, I don't, can we click on the Meads Mill Workforce link there on the bottom? Okay. Okay, and I'm going to turn it over now to Sharon Hall and Amy Sukup, who are the wonderful leaders of the program and our wonderful students.
We're working on getting the kids up, and they're going to actually start and run the whole presentation.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Zoe Leau, and I am a current eighth grader here at Meads Mill. Today, we'll be talking about the Meads Mill Workforce alongside me are...
Diego Rivas of eighth grade.
Irene Liu, and I'm in eighth grade.
Joyce Joseph, and I'm in sixth grade.
Violet Radeski, I'm in seventh grade.
Lucas Lea, I'm in seventh grade.
Anamun Kulasi, and I'm in sixth grade.
Some of you may be asking, what is the Meads Mill Workforce? The workforce is a program where students can take on real jobs around the school to help improve Meads Mill.
The workforce helps students prepare for working in the future, careers, and jobs. Opportunities are given to learn skills like getting interviewed and reporting to their supervisors. Now, we will talk about some attributes of the workforce.
The Meads Mill Workforce has three main attributes, responsibility, professionalism, and worth ethic.
Let's start with the first one, responsibility. To be a successful worker, you must be responsible. This means, this means following instructions, taking initiative, being accountable for your actions, and managing your time. This is important because that way others can count on you to do your job well.
Another important attribute is being a professional. This means having a positive attitude, communicating well with others, following our school rules, and dressing appropriately for your job. Professionalism, what, enchan- enhances your school job capabilities, and allows you to contribute more efficiently to the school.
Last but not least, your worth ethic. You should always be productive while working, showing a willingness to work, to learn, and improve, working well with others, seeking feedback and implying it. Having good worth ethic shows that you are dedicated to your role and putting effort into your job to help make your school a better place.
Next up, we'll be focusing on the benefits of the workforce. For students like me, we learn to develop a sense of responsibility and apply proper work ethic. Students learn about accountability while taking on tasks around the school.
School jobs provide opportunities for students to learn crucial skills. One skill is developing responsibility and ownership. For students, they learn accountability and to contribute to the sense of ownership and pride in our school community.
School jobs like the ones we have in the workforce help students gain key skills in areas such as time management, communication, teamwork, problem solving, and much more.
Being part of the workforce is not just about doing your job, it's a perfect opportunity for students to feel like they belong and are making a difference in our school community, no matter what their job is. Being a part of the workforce also improves behavior in classes and increases student
Last but not least, a job provides a valuable opportunity to be part of something larger. No matter what your job possesses, it fosters a positive atmosphere and strong teamwork among students. Everyone is working hard to make our school even better than it already is.
Not only do students get valuable skills, they also get paid for doing their job.
For weekly jobs like morning announcements or assisting teachers, students are paid five Patriot Pride tickets a week.
For salary jobs like new student shadow or hallway DJ, students are paid 30 Pride tickets per quarter.
This is a fantastic opportunity for students to contribute to the school and also earn some Patriot Pride tickets along the way. Next up, we have a few quotes from some of our amazing teachers.
So our first quote is, "Students seem more invested in the classroom when they have a role to play. The jobs provide a sense of purpose and belonging, which I believe contributes to increased engagement in their learning."
Another quote, it's, is, is, "It's been fantastic to see students who might not always interact, talking on jobs together. This shared purpose breaks down social barriers and builds a stronger sense of community within the classroom."
Our third quote is, "I've seen students develop a greater understanding of the effort and organization involved in maintaining a functional environment. This appreciation extends their learning as they become more mindful of resources and processes."
The last quote is, "Even seemingly small jobs can have a big impact on a student's motivation. Feeling trusted and responsible can boost their confidence and make them more willing to participate in other aspects of the classroom life."
Before we go, let's see what some students have to say about the Meads Mill Workforce.
Hello, my name's Zoe Leau, I'm an eighth grader this year at Meads Mill. Being part of the workforce helped me improve my confidence level when speaking to an audience while doing announcements. I was also able to connect with other students in the school, sharing their accomplishments and everything they did this year to everyone.
Hello, my name is Diego Rivas, and I worked in the morning announcements for the Meads Mill Workforce. And having the opportunity to participate in the Meads Mill Workforce, I had the chance to work on being responsible and accountable for my job. I made sure to show up on time and complete the task correctly and efficiently with my peers.
Hi, my name is Irene, and I'm an eighth grader that helped with the morning announcements. Being a part of the Meads Mill Workforce was a great experience that helped me develop my speaking skills and job responsibility. I got to work with other people and communicate efficiently, which gave me lifelong skills.
Hi, I'm Felicity Carrier, and I like being, and I like the Meads Mill Workforce because it helped me feel more connected to the school, and I enjoyed helping deliver things to other people all around the school.
Hi, my name is Ellie Howell, I am in eighth grade at Meads Mill, and I work for the Meads Mill Workforce. I have the jobs Computer Captain and Lost and Found Organizer. My favorite part about the workforce was meeting other people that cared about the school as much as I did.
Hello, my name is Bella Moore, I was the Lost and Found Organizer for the Quarter Three Meads Mill Workforce, and I'm in sixth grade. I love my job because I love making sure that things are neat and organized so that people can find their missing belongings, and I also liked being able to return lost items back to students around the school.
My name is Hazel Northglide, and my original job was Counseling Office Assistant. I like being part of the Meads Mill Workforce because I felt more connected to the Meads Mill community and because I got to meet people as dedicated to their job as me.
Hello, everyone, I'm Henry Fabinski, and I am in seventh grade, and I've been helping out as the Computer Captain. Having the opportunity to work in the Meads Mill Workforce, I had the ability to go to different places of the school and help out with the school community as Computer Captain. I'm making everyone's lives easier by helping out with computers.
Hello, my name is Lucas Lea, and I'm a seventh grader, and my job is Computer Captain. Having a job at the Meads Mill Workforce improved my responsibilities. I made sure all the computers are plugged in, so my peers will have charged computers available to use when needed.
Hello, everyone, my name is Violet Radeski, and my job is the Counseling Office Assistant. I help out the school by tidying the break room and the links room. I feel like I'm making the counselor's job easier, and I enjoy helping them out.
Hi, I'm Ryan Opit, and I was, I did dusting and common area. One thing I really liked about doing it was making the school a better place, and the Patriot Pride tickets.
My name is Danielle Cooney, and my job as dust inspector in the Meads Mill Workforce was to dust the locker areas. I really enjoyed this job because I got the chance to make the school cleaner and a better place.
My name is Finn Smith, and I'm in sixth grade, and I'm doing the dust inspector. I enjoy, I enjoy working because it's exciting and a fun experience. I enjoy, I enjoy working with my friends in the hallways to make our school environment more clean for other students.
Hello, my name is Anamun Kulasi, and I am a part of the Morning Announcements Team. I enjoy contributing to the Meads Mill Workforce because I got to inform students of upcoming events and got to work with my friends.
Hello, I am Tyler Amo, and I am dust inspector. What I enjoy about dust inspector is I enjoy working with my best friend and help keeping the school clean, and I will definitely join back next year because this is a fun and rewarding program.
Hi, my name is Joyce Joseph, and I'm in sixth grade. My job was doing morning announcements and teacher assistant. I enjoy doing my job because it helped me improve on my communication skills and develop
We're just debating because some of us have to run off to choir before we head to DC tonight. So there are job descriptions that give the role, the descriptions of the 22 jobs that we had. Quarter three, we had over 99 kids hired in our workforce. Quarter four, we're about the same with, between 80 and like 95 kids hired in our workforce that are going out in the Meads Mill community and doing their job. I don't know, as I was watching the videos, this was all them, and I'm listening to all the dusting and cleaning and organizing, parents who are here, I hope that's happening at home because... We heard that. They really, like, hear that, because they really take it up. I will tell you, as a teacher, one thing I noticed, the student isn't here, so it's none of you, there was a student who was really struggling second quarter, not doing well at all. They were hired for a job, and literally within a week, they did amazing at their job, putting up signs, posters, creating slides, and all of a sudden their work in the classroom started coming in all the time. It was, there has to be a connection, and it was just amazing to see, and how much they loved doing all the jobs, like cleaning up garbage, dusting the school, our dusters have schedules that they created, our computer people created a schedule, it's just, they really take ownership and they run with it, and it's been amazing, and all these folks here are continuing in the workforce this quarter as well, so we're just really proud of them.
To kind of piggyback off of what they've already mentioned, another reason that we, Amy and I, decided to take this on and, and put as much work as we have into it is, it's part of our PBIS program as well, that's where our Patriot Pride tickets come from and what students are able to do with those, and this year, one of our goals as a school was to really put emphasis into our PBIS program and bring some of the value back to our Patriot Pride tickets. And we've done a lot of other activities as well that require students to need the Pride tickets, to want them, to get involved with these jobs and stuff like that, so this meshes with that program as well. It's been a lot of work so far, but it is, has been really rewarding with just the two quarters that we've already been going through with it.
I will also tell you, there's some entrepreneurial skills up here. The one gentleman who said he liked the Pride tickets, he and his friend figured out a system of how many they could earn and save, and I'm like, they're like, we have a good rate of return here, Mrs. Sukup, and I'm like, okay, well, that's more math than I know, but keep going with it, so yay, jobs. And next, we are...
Thank you. So one of the drivers of this program is kind of the difference that you see when you're in an elementary school, and then, you know, you see kids all over the place with all kinds of responsibilities, going back and forth and doing things, and when they get to middle school, a lot of the times, it's stay in your class, you're not trusted to be in the halls, and so really opening that up and linking this with our PBIS program and our MTSS program, trying to find ways to reach kids, to make them feel part of our community and to have a place here. So if we could go back to the original presentation, and so now I, we are going to, if you could go to the, let's see, we are going to, okay, I'm going to introduce now Danielle Anderson, who is head of our inclusion program here, our Unified Patriots, and she's going to talk to us about our progress towards this, this year.
Thank you. Okay. Hi, good evening. Wow, well, so the opportunity was presented to me to become a Unified Champion School, and so with the help of my colleagues at Hillside and at the high school, I was able to work with the Special Olympics of Michigan to become a Unified Champion School, and so we're still figuring out how that all fits in, but we have a really great start. So first of all, Unified Champion Schools, it's really a program for pre-K all the way to university, and although Special Olympics is, Special Olympics of Michigan is geared towards individuals with intellectual disabilities, they've really broadened their definition of social inclusion, and, and that's really what drew me to it because of everything else we do here at Meads Mill. So, but their main goal is to intentionally promote meaningful social inclusion, to be, by bringing students with and without intellectual disabilities together. And they do that with three main components, which are school engagement, youth, inclusive youth, excuse me, inclusive youth leadership, and with unified sports. So for whole school engagement, we do an amazing job at Meads Mill, engaging all of our learners, but one additional thing we got to do this year was welcome our Unified Stings from the high school three times this year, and they came during lunch to engage our students in fun and inclusive activities like trivia games, coloring, and bracelet making. And one of the really great things about working with Special Olympics is getting money, so we were given $1,200 to use to promote any of the three components of the Unified Champion Schools. And so we actually used most of that money to, to purchase materials for our PBIS celebrations, so everything just came in within the last month, and all of our workforce, delivery people brought everything to my room, it was like Christmas. I mean, we got two new ping pong tables, two cornhole, a bowling game, and a giant Connect Four game that they'll all get to use on the last day of school. So we have more goals than accomplishments at this point, but that's okay. Eventually, I hope that we can extend our knowledge and support to elementary schools and hopefully send some of our students down to elementary schools at some point. And, you know, of course, we want to continue to encourage our students to be agents of change through sports and Special Olympics initiatives, and of course, foster an environment that encourages respect, dignity, and advocacy. The second component is the one with, that we are the weakest on currently, next year though, our goal is to create a leadership team that's specifically dedicated to a unified club. So, yeah, that's, that is a goal, and then also unified sports. So this year, four of our great Meads Mill students played with Hillside's Unified Basketball Team, and there are a few pictures there, it was great, it was during Inclusion Week. Our goal moving forward is to increase participation in unified sports, either on our own teams or by including more Meads Mill students on the Hillside Teams. This is, these are a couple of pictures from Inclusion Week. So we had a pretty good-sized group of our students go over to Hillside to their silent disco, and who knows, maybe next, next year or the year after, we'll have our own silent disco, but they had a great time. And then the bottom left, that is a, a picture of an activity during Inclusion Week, we include, we challenged our students, in fact, Ms. Provo did a video and specifically challenged students to look for new ways to be inclusive to others, and students colored those and wrote how they included someone that week, so. And lastly, I made this because when I think about being unified, I think about being part of something, everyone wants to feel included, accepted, and feel like they belong somewhere, and, you know, we do so many things here, and I feel like really unified is just one, one more awesome way to bring us all together and create community, so.
All right, thank you, Danielle, and Inclusion Week was so special here at Meads Mill, we really had a great time challenging kids to all different things, having different activities, different words for each day of the week, and next year, I'm excited to grow that and expand that into some new areas. So our, we, I'm going to introduce you guys to our Lit Club, and come on up, ladies, and Wendy Martin is...
And Wendy Martin is a science teacher here at Meads Mill. And her and Shannon Cullen have been leading this wonderful group of ladies. And you guys are receiving some materials that were important to the group as they started their journey. And I will go ahead and turn it over to the students.
I'm Asher Corr and I'm an eighth grader at Meads Mill.
Hi, I'm Erin Rayburn and I'm a student in Meads Mill.
Hi, my name is Ruby Jason Kevich and I'm an eighth grade student at Meads Mill.
Hi, I'm Elena Anderson and I'm in eighth grade.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Whitaker and I'm in eighth grade.
Hi, I'm Bavia Kapolu and I'm also in eighth grade.
Hi, I'm Mariana Rivas and I'm in eighth grade.
How were you inspired to start LLIT? Those of us who went on the two day Women's Summit Field Trip in Grand Rapids were inspired to start LLIT, which stands for Lady Ledgers in Training.
We love the atmosphere of the summit where women could freely express their opinions and not get judged.
It was a place where everyone could relate to each other and learn about things happening with women in our world today.
We wanted to bring that to our school and give other girls an opportunity to do the same.
At the summit, we learned about lots of statistics about women, what they face in the world and what they go through for things like confidence or social media. An example is 52% of fifth and sixth grade girls are not sure if they are smart enough for their dream career, often 23% in 2017.
Another example is 79% of girls feel like they are going to explode because there's so much pressure on them.
Hi, my name is Bavia Kapolu and I went to the Women's Summit in fall of 2024. My favorite experience was going to break out rooms, talk to college girls about their experience, going up to their college and the paths they took to reach their dreams.
Hi, my name is Erin Rayburn. My favorite thing that I learned at the Women's Summit in Grand Rapids was to take up space with my confidence.
Hi, my name is Ruby Jason Kevich and I went to the Women's Summit. My favorite thing about the Women's Summit was learning about how to change your weather, which basically means how to change your emotions with integrity.
I think that the Women's Summit meeting was an amazing experience. And I think that LLIT should be moved to other schools because of how much power it shows in women and how responsibility is shown so much. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ava Taylor and I went to the Women's Summit. My favorite thing that I learned there was having deep, meaningful talks with some of the older girls, which really helped me.
Hi, I'm Elena Anderson and I went to the Women's Summit in fall of 2024. My favorite thing I learned was from keynote speaker Molly Kennedy and she taught us to flip your 20. Basically what that means is you can have two 10 cents or one 20 cent. And it's all about perspective and if you want to choose to think about positive or negative.
Hi, my name is Julian Hall and I went to the Women's Summit meeting in fall of 2024. My favorite lesson from the meeting was how to value myself as a person and fully recognize my self-worth and have full confidence all the time.
Okay, so you might be wondering what we've done this year. So this April, we held a bake sale to raise money for foundry products in the bathroom. And our bake sale was extremely successful as we raised $189. We also wrote positive and uplifting messages on the mirrors and bathroom stalls, including in the, in the gym locker rooms. We also have weekly meetings where everyone is allowed to come. And we use those meetings to, to create a positive empowering community where people feel free to express themselves the way they are.
This club has meant a lot to all of us. We have been provided the opportunity to empower other girls as well as creating a safe environment where we can all be ourselves. Even though many of us did not go to the Women's Summit Field Trip, we have been able to be a part of this wonderful club and surrounded by amazing people. Regardless of the fact that we have only had the chance to be a part of this club this year, we are so glad that other middle schoolers will get to be.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Whitaker. I decided to join the LLIT Club because I saw the community that was being built around it. I wanted to make new friends and inspire other people to be comfortable being themselves and love being who they are.
Hi, my name is HK and I decided to join the LLIT Club because I saw the uplifting posters around school and wanted to spread a positive message to the young girls in Meads Mill.
Hi, I'm Ava and I'm here with Alicia. Now Alicia, what was your favorite thing about joining LLIT?
Writing positive things in the bathroom.
Now, how did this help you and other people?
It inspired people's day.
Hi, I'm Erin. I'm in eighth grade and today I'm here with Catherine, Kelly, Annabelle. And today I'm going to be asking you guys how the writing in the bathroom has like impacted your day or might impact someone else's day?
Like if you're having a bad day, it can uplift your day.
Like if someone was saying something mean about me, it made me feel better about myself.
I think it's just really nice to see that in the mirror every day.
All right. Thank you, guys. Hi, my name is Caitlin Whitaker and I'm in eighth grade. I'm here with Kylie O'Neal and I'm from the Great State. Have you guys seen the signs and messages on the bathrooms for LLIT?
Yes.
How's it guys impacted you?
I was feeling down and it made me feel really important. It just like uplifted my day and like made me happier.
Hi, I'm Elena and I'm in eighth grade and I'm with and how do you guys feel about the writing in the bathrooms?
I feel like it's really, it makes me feel better, it makes me like my day better. It's very uplifting and it is making me so happy.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Hi, my name is Ruby Jason Kevich and I'm here with Katie Mazer. What do you think could change the view of women empowerment in our school? Making sure that all boys and girls are equal, not just having a dress code for girls. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Erin Rayburn and today I'm here with Megan. And how can women empowerment be spread at Meads Mill? Um, we can encourage each other and lift each other up. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ava Taylor and I'm an eighth grader here at Meads Mill. Today I'm with
Hi, I'm Ms. Mari. I teach at Meads Mill, sixth and seventh grade exams now. Now Ms. Mari, what is one way that LLIT can help and support girls in middle school?
Well, I think nowadays we have a lot more stressors and pressure in middle school. There's social media and there's just so much going on that I think would be a really great space for opportunity for kids to have a space where they can share and feel safe and feel like they can express themselves and just something where they feel safe and supported.
Thank you so much. You're welcome.
My name is Ruby Jason Kevich and I'm here with Ms. Sukup. What can make Meads Mill a better place for women empowerment?
I think you can always improve in women's empowerment. And I teach sixth grade, so I in particular see it in the sixth grade, that we need role models, examples, a place for girls to go to ask questions, not just to their teacher, but to somebody way cooler than us, where they could gain that confidence, gain self-esteem, and run with people who are older and cooler. It could also get them
Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Ruby Jason Kevich and I'm here with Ms. Provo. How do you think could make Meads Mill a better place for women empowerment?
Well, I think it's really important that we have a place where all students feel welcomed and valued, including women. And then looking at those issues that girls in particular struggle with and that keeps them from achieving their pro potential. So looking at everything from how we are questioning students in the classroom to how we're grouping students, all of those instructional strategies, there's plenty of work to do.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Erin and today I'm going to be interviewing
Hi, I'm Sarah Divian.
And I'm going to be asking you, why do you think LLIT should expand to more schools?
I think this is a great program that we've started here. It really helps girls to feel more empowered, strong and build confidence as they head into the future.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Plans in the future. Some of our plans in the future are to buy stickers with inspiring words and place them on the outside of stalls in the bathroom. This will put a smile on someone's face and encourage people to always be positive to theirself no matter what.
Do a feminine, feminine product drive to fill our bathrooms with the things girls need. We will use the funds we made during our bake sale to do this.
Go to seminar classes to recruit new members for our club, since most of our club is eighth graders and we're leaving next year.
Thank you. All right. All right. Thank you so much. So these are some of the strides that we've taken towards creating that sense of community around the building that's so important during the middle school years. And so now we're going to move into teaching and learning. And I know that previously you guys have seen some of the Building Thinking classrooms work at Hillside. And we wanted to highlight that connection between our two buildings and how Meads Mill is going to be using these instructional strategies. You'll see a sample task, you'll hear from some students up here in a circle. And then we'll talk about going forward. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over now to Dr. Zalinski and Kristi Maurer and Tanya Trailer and Wendy Martin, who's, she's going to need to sit for right now. So, all right.
It's great to be back with you again. Thank you very much for this opportunity to share with you what we've been doing here at Meads Mill. Yes, as Melissa shared, you've probably seen Building Thinking classrooms a lot throughout our district. It's in the elementary schools, it's at Hillside, it's at Meads Mill here. And it's also getting started at the high school level. So we just wanted you to know about that. We have Kristi Maurer, who also helped us get started with Building Thinking classrooms here. And we have Tanya Trailer and Wendy Martin. They actually are not math teachers, although they can do math. But they are English Language Arts, Tanya, and then Wendy is our science teacher. So we're taking, Meads Mill is taking Building Thinking classrooms across the content areas. All right. So we're excited about that. So we introduced ourselves. So how did Building Thinking classrooms get started here at Meads Mill? It was just the perfect storm because I had heard about Building Thinking classrooms from other teachers in our district and in other districts. And I went to Kristi one, one day and I said, Kristi, what do you think about Building Thinking classrooms? Would you like to read this book? She said, Carrie, I've already got the book and I've started reading it. And in fact, Jenny Pascal, another teacher here, had already invited us to go to Anderson Middle School in Berkeley and visit some classrooms there that were already implementing Building Thinking classrooms. So it really is Kristi and Jenny who helped get it started here. So thank you to them. Later on in our presentation, you're going to be learning about the 14 factors and Kristi's going to be talking about that. And then guess what? You get to participate again in vertical whiteboards and then Language Arts task this evening. So you might recognize a few people here.
So do you notice anybody? Do you recognize anybody in these photos?
I do, yes.
All right. Do you remember what happened on this night?
Absolutely.
So the task collector, remember this was at Hillside. Did all of you engage? Well, all of these people appear engaged in a math task, believe it or not. How would you describe your experience? How might you describe your experience?
It was fun. It was engaging.
Collaborative.
Expanding your thinking.
Healthily competitive.
Possibly attached.
I also thought supportive. It was, you know, it felt like a safe place.
And I know I didn't capture everything you said. Anything else that you said that I have yet to capture?
Well, I can remember we thought we got to the end and you, you asked us a few questions to make us realize that we hadn't gotten to the end. We hadn't figured out everything. So that was inspiring, maybe.
So that's the same thing. I mean, we, our students, you're going to hear from them and we'll let them share their stories. But yes, these are the things exactly that we see going on in, in classrooms. I can't remember if we shared this with you or not.
I don't think so.
But this is
I don't think so.
levels of engagement. And we want you to think about your experience that you had at Hillside. Where would you say your level of engagement was and what?
Strategic compliance.
So you were thinking strategic compliance and why?
Well, we all wanted to not look like, like we were idiots. To be honest.
Yeah, I think high attention because we were definitely going to get up and move around and we were focused on the task, but I wasn't going to get a grade out of that math. But I also didn't want to
Not get it.
Not get it. Maybe there was going to be a grade at the end.
Except that I understand that the gentleman down at the end of the table really scored a home run.
Yes, I had high attention and high commitment. It was, it was
But I, I enjoyed learning about the people I was learning with. You know, we all have different skill sets and paper and pencil tests or, or electronic tests or something like the PSAT or AP tests. It's a, it's really a binary piece where you simply see a score and that's it. But when you're with people and you get to see some of their gifts kind of come out and my fun was watching the faces of people and just seeing the gears turning. What if we did this? And it's like, hey, you know? And so to me, that aspect of it as well contributed to the attention. It wasn't just the task, really, it was the people I was with because it was really neat to see how they all worked or thought.
I mean, I was the lucky one in a group with Dr. Weber and Mr. Jones. So I was like, oh gee.
Wait a second. You, you actually, I think you had the breakthrough thing there, I think, you know? I think Bill and I think we're smart, but we're really not.
It was fun.
You nailed it.
It was, it was a good time, though.
And it was safe, too.
Yes.
And you were able to collaborate and talk it over and problems solve together. Which, and you even had an eraser. And so you used that until you could, you figured it out. So here in Northville, what we would like our students and teachers to actually engage with is this authentic engagement, high attention and high commitment. That's our goal here. Where students really are here to learn and enjoy learning with each other collaboratively in safe spaces.
Sorry.
That's okay. You may or may not have heard of Bloom's Taxonomy, but this is a framework in terms of the levels of thinking. And when we teach students growth memorization, facts, procedures, algorithms, just to, just to memorize, we're actually working at the lowest level of thinking and the lowest level of engagement. And they're learning facts and algorithms and very discreet and disconnected experiences. And what we want to do again is raise or increase the levels of thinking that our students are doing here in Northville throughout all content areas. And so how might you describe a thinking classroom?
Busy.
More active also.
Maybe a little bit louder.
Think an environment where, as I'd mentioned earlier, people are able to show what maybe gifts they do have that again, in what many of the classrooms that we grew up in didn't foster or allow. And I think there's a healthy mix of all of that, whether it's a thinking classroom like this or traditional pieces. But it's been kind of a theme of the night of here so far at Meads is, you know, how do we include every and each person in whatever they might have?
I was going to say that too. It seems like it'd be pretty hard as a student to like hide unless you stuck off to the bathroom.
I would say mistakes are allowed.
Yeah.
Well, mistakes are essential. It's not even, it's like, aha, that's, that's a big aha. Oh, that didn't work. Why didn't it work? Why didn't it work? That's a real important moment of learning. So that's really a good point.
I think it's less frustrating because you get stuck, somebody else in your group maybe has the answer to kind of keep momentum going.
All right. Kristi's going to take it away.
Okay. So I'll give you a little bit about the book, just because I don't know that you heard a lot about the background of where he's coming from. And then talk a little bit about me and then we'll talk to some of my students. So Peter Lildoll is a professor of mathematics education at SFU. And he defines a few things that happen in our classrooms that are not necessarily desired. And one of them is studenting. And that's what students do in a learning setting. And a lot of it is not necessarily learning. It's more like playing the game, doing what we expect them to do, but their focus isn't on the outcome in terms of how it's enriching them as individuals. It's just them fulfilling a role. He explored how institutional norms interfere with how students think and how they learn. And he identified 14 factors that contribute to student learning. So these are the questions basically he asked himself in terms of what to analyze. And he analyzed them a bit at a time and he collected data. And it was actually incredibly convincing. I've read a lot of books on education. And this one, really, he supported what he was saying with evidence. So he considered what types of tasks do we use? How are groups formed? Where students should work? How we arrange the furniture? How we ask questions? How we give the tasks? What does homework look like? How do we foster autonomy? So there's all sorts of different aspects of this. As you can see, it's multi-layered. And so when he looked at all of these, he came up with, and it's kind of hard probably for you to see, answers basically to those questions. So he, when we're giving the students tasks, they should be thinking tasks. When we put students in group, we should form them frequently and they should be random. And they should be visibly random. So the kids don't think that, oh, I need random groups, but I'm really trying to put so, so and so together. We should use vertical, non-permanent surfaces. And there was a really interesting graphic on this where he put time on task. And you wouldn't imagine it, but using a horizontal surface versus a vertical surface made a difference. The fact that it's non-permanent versus permanent made a huge difference. Defronting the classroom. So students, when they come into a classroom, they have certain expectations of what they're going to experience in that classroom. And with those expectations, they think that there are certain behaviors that they should exhibit. So when they come into a classroom that doesn't look the typical way, they then are a little set off and they think that maybe I'm going to be doing something in here that's different than what I usually do. Answer only keep thinking questions. Give the thinking task early, standing verbally. Give check your understanding questions. Mobilize knowledge. They won't read through all of these. So when I came into this year, at first I was like, I'm going to do every single one of these things. Like, that's it. And then as I was planning and working, I realized I was going to drive myself insane because there would be no way to overhaul everything. So the way this is structured, he kind of has it in quadrants. And he says tackle a fourth of this at a time, put your focus there, and then move on to the next one. So in my room, I started the year with thinking tasks. Every single day we change seats. So there are new groups every day. So they don't have assigned seats ever. We use vertical, non-permanent surfaces. My classroom is somewhat defronted just because my classroom is arranged in a weird way where my Promethean boards in one place and the boards are otherwise. But that one's a little hard to do. I try to answer only keep thinking questions. So I started in that first quadrant and I've dribbled down into the second and third, consolidating from the bottom, talking about how we do notes, things like that. And so I'm kind of moving through this structure with the kids. And it's more what's worked and what's not and what am I ready to take on? And then as we do more, you know, I'll be incorporating more next year as well. So the key elements to get started, not just in math, but in anything, are rich thinking tasks. And one of the points that he makes is that, and that's the task collector that you guys did, even though it seemed like a math task, he decided that that was our determinant that was a thinking task in terms of you really didn't need a deep mathematical knowledge in order to engage, but you really had to think of a plan of attack and approach and revise that plan. So before you even get the students into content, you need to get them used to thinking in ways where they're slightly uncomfortable, where there's not one path to the answer. So that that opens them up then to thinking in unique pathways when you do present the content. Randomized grouping is another place to start. The vertical, non-permanent surfaces. And one key to the group, and we can talk about how sometimes this is a struggle, there's one marker per group and the person with the marker records others' thinking, not their own. So the point of this is to try to keep the teamwork going. So if someone's in charge and they have the marker and they just go up there and write everything down, we just have two bystanders that aren't engaged. So if someone really feels confident, they should hand that marker off to somebody else. And they can help that person put those thoughts, that work into writing so they're both engaging. So it's almost like we have two advisors and one writer. And it doesn't mean that they're completely compartmentalized into those roles, but it should never be just one person is running the show. And every once in a while, they can attest, I have to come around the room and be like, give the marker away. Give the marker away. And actually, in my last test, I had somebody mention, she said, it's hard for her to be at the boards because the way she thinks is with writing. And so I'll often tell her, because she's a really strong math student, give the marker away. And she's like, but I need to work out what I'm thinking by writing. So I'm like, okay, now I've got to think about how can I work with people that are like that to still keep them engaged and not feel like she's not allowed to think in her, in her best way. All right. So I luckily had some students be willing to come and kind of share their perspectives. I was supposed to have a fifth, but she had a track meet and she was hoping for rain, actually, but it didn't work out that way. So we're going to come up and just kind of sit in a circle to make it a little less intimidating, maybe, and talk about a few questions. And then if you have some questions for the students, you can ask them before we start talking about how ELA and science look. Okay. Do you guys want to introduce yourselves? You want, oh, okay. I will introduce them. You've seen a few of them already. So Erin is in my Math 8 class. So just to make it clear, I teach Algebra 2, Algebra 1, Math 8, and Math Enrichment. And so I've only been doing this in my Math 8 and Math Enrichment classes because Algebra 2 is new to me and I just couldn't do it in another one right now. So I'm kind of doing it a bit at a time. So I have Erin in Math 8. We have Noir Mohammed, and she's in my Math Enrichment class. So she doesn't have me for Math 8, but she experiences the boards in my Math Enrichment. And Mariana Rivas, who's in my Math 8, and Katie Hand, who's also in Math 8. All right. So just to kind of compare, we already have that list going that the board had. How would you guys describe a thinking classroom? Or now that they did this, how would you say our room, when you see this happening or thinking classrooms, if you think we're a thinking classroom, aligns with the things that you see here?
I think that everyone really is like putting their best effort into what they're doing and everyone's like talking and not just talking about like random things, but talking about the subject that we're talking about.
Yeah, I like to agree with Erin. Like it keeps you like on folk, like on task and like it's like to see a different way how different people are like thinking. And it like helps you like think also in a different way, not in just like one way.
Yeah, I really like how you can hear other people's perspectives and learn new ways to solve the problems.
I think it's overall like really fun because like, I remember one memory I have is like, we were having a whole day, we were just at boards and there were problems and I was really concentrating on how to figure out, because I was like, I was confused and the person I was working with was like, you got this, like, come on, you, it's not that hard. And I was like, okay, I got this. So I just kept trying different ways over and over again, trying to like figure out what the answer was. And after a while, I finally did it. And it was fun to do it together with somebody.
Okay. How does this feel different maybe than math classes that you have had before? I mean, even the math class I was running last year, right? This is very different.
I think it's definitely more engaging and it's more hands-on because I know I need to like learn hands-on and that's just the way I learn. And looking at a teacher describing something to me, it's like harder to learn or understand it. So it's way easier, I guess.
For me, I think like there's, when a teacher like teaches something, it's like in a particular way that they teach it. And like the way that, like when we use the boards, like I feel like you have like diff, you have like, you can do different ways to solve the problem, even though like the way a teacher might explain it, you might not understand, like you can still like find different ways through using boards.
For me, this is different because like Erin said, I feel like hands-on learning helps us engage more. And before this, when we didn't do the boards, I feel like I forgot a lot of the things we learned. But now when we did the boards, like I feel like I remember and I'm better at the skills.
Mariana said, I feel like with the boards, there's also like memories of you working together with your friends and having fun with math. So it also like, oh yeah, I remember this math class. Then you're like, oh yeah, and you remember the work with it, too, because there's more. Like it's more impactful than just sitting down or just doing math problems by yourself in a silent classroom.
Okay. How do you feel like this process has helped you?
I keep going the same order.
It's okay. I think it definitely helps me, like Katie was saying, and Mariana, how it helps me like memorize things better. Because I know even when like studying for tests or quizzes, I have to write down things a bunch of times to remember it. And I feel like it helps me remember things way better and it will help me like in the future as well and on testing quizzes.
For me, kind of what like Erin says, but like it does really help you like remember and like you need to, and it shows you how to like break down the work. Like it helps you break it down, like show your work and stuff, not just like go straight to the answer that might be like not even right half the time.
I feel like it helps with your teamwork skills and how to work with others. And it helps you with like tests and quizzes because it's like everything's in your brain after repeating it and learning.
Going off what she said, like instead of like for tests, like redoing and writing, you start, you learn it by writing and like, like learning it the way you're most comfortable. And so it's just like getting taught by your teacher and then practicing. You get to practice with somebody else who might have the same. And you can like talk about ways to figure out the answer instead of just trying to figure it by yourself and not knowing anything else, like go off of and continue helping you.
And I'll just build off just because of something they said. I can picture in my head moments where each of these ladies like took a leadership role in terms of not having the marker and working with somebody who maybe wasn't getting it that moment and was giving them the you got this kind of walkthrough. And those connections, the teamwork piece is something that is very different. And last one, we, Katie kind of touched on this a little bit, just to kind of keep it open, were there any memorable experiences or favorite aspects of doing this in terms of a classroom, our classroom?
My favorite, one of my most like remember is like when we were, I don't know, but we had people like observing the classroom. So we were doing our boards the whole day. And I was working with someone like I usually don't talk to, but like I realized like how similar we are and like a bunch of like com, like a lot of things that like we have in common with each other. So we were able to do math. And after we finished the math, we did it quicker because we were like able to like, it's like, I don't know, like did it faster because like we both understood the way we both learned about stuff. So we were like able to explain it. If it's anything, we'd be like, oh yeah, this way, think about it this way. And they're like, oh yeah, that helps me. And it was just quicker overall.
One of my favorite aspects is that like you, there's only one marker. So and the way I learn is like how you teach others. So I really like that. And memorable experiences, I really like getting to know new people.
Yeah, well, like the both of them said, but it's like, it's like a fun way to like get to know someone that you don't really talk to. Like our, our like math enrichment is like kind of small. So like, and I like joined it recently and it was like a lot of fun, like working with Billy, like even like at the boards or something else.
So I was going to say what Mariana was saying, but I think, yeah, I like how we pass around the marker and there's only one marker. So when you have someone that may understand it more than you, then they have, may have a different perspective than Ms. Mauer does. So then you get to hear what someone else says than what Ms. Mauer says. And it's just, you get a different voice every day.
Okay. I don't know if you guys have any questions that you'd like to ask the girls before I let them go?
So I'm curious because it looks like it's such a wonderful interaction that goes on in math. Do you carry any of that with you to another class? Do you use those kinds of learning?
Yeah, because like, okay, I was talking about like, if I talk to someone I'm not usually, it like helps with like social anxiety kind of, because I can like, I learn how to like talk with somebody because like I want to learn, because I don't want to fill math. So it kind of like forces you to learn, like talk to people and do things you're uncomfortable with, which is also good. Because like now I like talk to people and I learn how to like start a conversation and be a leader in a conversation if I'm not so comfortable with it before.
Beautiful.
I was curious to know how it impacts kind of your confidence as a person in math that, I wonder how, well, I don't want you to think about high school yet, but you're probably already thinking about it. You've probably already been over there to visit. And I'm just curious to know, what are you noticing about yourself and how it's improving your level of confidence around math and just other subjects and just peer relationships? I know you talked about that a little bit.
Like, like what we already said before, but like it really like helps you, like even like to show work in like also other classes. And like, it helps you like think better and like, because you like, you know, like you're supposed to do work, but like sometimes like you just want to rush to the answer. And sometimes like, oh, like, oh, I know I'm doing the right thing because like I'm going through these steps. And like, you could obviously like erase if you think you're doing wrong. And like, it just like makes me feel like I'm doing better and I'm like doing it righter, if that was a word.
Totally.
Which like, I don't know, it makes you like happy kind of to like know that I'm doing something right.
Um, adding on to Noir, I think it like kind of boosts your confidence, being able to like know that you're doing something right and getting feedback from others.
Yeah, like what they said, it makes you happy, especially like with the boards, like sounds if she, Ms. Mauer knows, like notices that someone's not like, the whole group isn't learning, she like makes you explain it. So like if you weren't explaining it before and you were too shy to talk about it, it helps someone, even if you didn't want to say something, it like kind of like forces someone else to like explain it better. And like if the whole group doesn't like understand it, you have to wait to go to the board. So it's like the whole group has to understand what you're learning. So like they're mem, like it's more memorable.
And I can just say, looking at the room, it's easy when you're teaching math to not have a lot of engagement. And, and when you just tell them what to do and they do it and you just watch them writing in your notes, but you don't know what they're thinking. So with this, you see people like taking roles and speaking up. And I feel like that has carried into people being a little bit more confident in what they're capable of doing. And they'll have those aha moments. Now, whether they last, sometimes they'll forget that they're capable and kind of take a backseat again. So it's kind of a continual process. But I think it kind of wakes them up to what's possible. I think so many students think math is something that's, they either have it or they don't. And there's only one way to do everything and that's still not true. So this kind of lets them see that it's not that linear process.
I have a question for you. I don't remember if it was last spring or the spring before where we had the demonstration on Desmos here.
Yes.
And I believe you gave it.
Yes.
So how do you work with Desmos and this learning? Because I know Desmos is very, you know, there's something every day.
Yes.
And engagement on that program. So how do you meld the two?
So it has, it has been a continual process. So it sometimes depends. Like there are some days where a lesson in Desmos, honestly, I have found wasn't particularly effective. And so I've replaced it with an activity at the board because I've found that I can get them more engaged if I give them something that they don't know how to do and I make them try it. And then they're much more likely to listen to me after that than if I had just said, hey, I'm going to tell you how to do this. You know, sometimes with Desmos, there are some entry spaces, like there's a warm-up at the beginning and I'll get them to the board with the warm-up. Sometimes the consolidating from the bottom with the notes. If I didn't have an opportunity because it was something incredibly interactive with the computers for their notes, I will have them go up. And instead of me telling them what to write down, they in their groups decide how to do certain examples and then they check those in with me or my co-teacher. And then if it looks good, then they copy those down into their notes. So that's another way they can do it. Also, what I've found is like, once I've gotten a little bit more comfortable, if we're in the middle of a lesson on Desmos and I see that like something is not clicking or they're not engaged, it's like, all right, we're going to close the computers, get to the board. I'm going to, I want you to look at this particular problem. And so I can kind of shift back and forth that way. And so next year again, you know, I'll be looking at more lessons in terms of thinking like how I can weave the two together.
Okay, that's great. I, we have a former teacher who now works for Desmos.
We do, yes.
Been able to give her some good feedback on that.
And that's really, to me, the art of teaching. And each of our teachers do this. You call audibles within whatever you're teaching. And the more tools you have to dig into that, it's never about a platform or a curricular resource, I think. Sometimes people, I can confuse curricular resources with curriculum and what that really means. And so seeing this and ladies like, I mean, what you all just said in that circle and And so seeing this and ladies like, I mean, what you all just said in that circle and came through there is exactly what, um, brings an educator's, uh, heart up. Uh, that you're learning, that there's a bit of good struggle, that you're helping each other out, that you feel comfortable, that you're writer. Are you writer? Writer? Ah, I love it. But there's a, when you said, you, you talked about the pride you have. We all like to do well. And sometimes we're not given the opportunities to do things well that we can really do well and we know we can. So I love the fact that you're owning the goodness. That is good. We should feel good about what we do. We should feel really good about what we do and we can shine. But the teachers here, Kristy, like this is what, this is the art of teaching. Uh, it is not a robotic exercise. It is not just follow these steps and you'll be a great teacher. And Karen, you're teaching this year, you got it. It's about every moment, using what you have to reach the kids you have. So I love the fact that, um, I think Karen, that was a great question and observation. And the idea that we can, uh, there's no, never one single answer to anything.
Well, I guess, and you, I don't want to make this assumption that you, it goes without saying, but to me that demonstrates that when you notice that things aren't going well, you're looking to see reflect on yourself rather than.
Oh, yeah. Well, you have to.
The other way, right?
I can't just say it's there. But I mean, you have to get the kids engaged as best you can. But like someone once said that you can lead a horse to water, um, but you can't make them drink, but you can make them thirsty, right? So, um, it's, it's trying to do everything you can to try to get them as engaged as possible. And sometimes it still doesn't work. They'll tell you, you know, um, they're, all three of them are in a class I have of 30. So we've got 10 boards with three kids at a board. It's a tight little squeeze. And, and notice I have all my ladies volunteering. I've got some boys that we, you know, kind of try to keep on task a little bit. Um, and, and some days are a little bit better than others with them, but it's trying to figure out a way to get through. And I, I will say that when they're at the boards, they are thinking in a way, um, no matter who I'm talking about in the classroom, that they usually are not. So now it's like, how do I get that to transition to seat time as well? Because sometimes once they get back to the seat, it's like that shuts off.
Part of the art that I, I detected was, uh, the consolidation and the note taking step at the backend. So how, um, how do you draw all of those learnings together into a set of, of recordable notes? That they're translatable, you know, that they can use to lift them up into the next lessons. And, um, and I know that you'll have some things in your mind that are key, that you will help them discover and put into their notes. But sometimes I bet that there's some, some, some new thoughts that should go into the notes that just emerged from your groups. And I, I just wonder, no one has to respond to this, but I, I'm wondering if that kind of awareness of how to structure note taking and what are the essential learnings that I want to capture, that I want to come back to, maybe are useful in other classes? And I would like to say that those will be useful as you rise through, you know, your education all the way into college. I mean, it's just, you know, it's not copying the title, you know, the subtitles and the chapter and then putting a sentence, you know. Back in my day, it was just, you know, is regurgitating the book onto a bunch of three by five cards and then running the, you know, running the memory work, which is not this at all.
And I can say, I, I honestly haven't had enough time to give them the autonomy I'd like with the notes. Um, there's a structure already set up. And so I do like the fill in the blank, there's a fill in the blank section. And there's some examples and there's things I'd like to remember. Um, in an ideal world, in a longer class period, um, I would love it to turn more of that over to them. And already my co-teacher and I are talking about how to restructure things next year. So that, that tackling that things I want to remember, that's where I want to go next, where they fill that up. And they can look at other kids' things that they wanted to remember and, and then use that to help them going forward. Okay, sorry.
Thank you so much for your questions. Thank you, girls, for sharing your insights. All right. Now we have Tanya and Wendy.
Okay, so I have been using this in my science class for two weeks now. So I'm very new to all of this, but, um, the practices that go along with building thinking classrooms blend so beautifully with what science is all about, which is inquiry based, having students, um, studying and learning about these phenomenon questions that they have to come to an understanding about. And all school year and, and years past, I've always said, your learning comes from the discussion with each other. You come up with these great ideas and I want you to listen to each other and build on what each other is saying and question each other. And it's just really not happening so much, but I've noticed with using the boards, it is starting to happen. They are listening because they're in the smaller groups. They're listening to each other in these randomized groups. And they are collaborating and they are developing understandings using these very creative pathways that they're developing. And, um, it's, it's just mind boggling. I'm just so impressed with how they're taking this and running with it. And getting to these ideas and answers in such interesting ways. And then they're able to go back into their seat groups, bringing what they learned from the, the randomized groups. They can bring that and now collaborate with a different, you know, set of brains to talk about what they've just come up with, with their standing up vertical board groups. So, um, this is just, I, I'm, I sit here and I'm thinking, oh, that would be a good thing to put as a thinking question tomorrow. Oh, that would, ooh, I'm going to do this next. So, um, it's, I'm just very excited about this. This is really an amazing way for them to, to really be able to be so much more engaged. And you can't hide. There is no hiding. The students, you know, as I look around and walk around and with them, they're all working. They're all thinking. They're all participating in some way. So it's, it's a wonderful thing to see. Oh, and then, sorry, I forgot I had some pictures. These are just some pictures of the students working together at the collaborative boards. Um, all of my boards, you know, I have them positioned in various wherever they would fit. I needed 11 boards for the class sizes. So, um, you can see they're just in all different areas of the room. Um, there's one that it's board number three and it's low and we call it squatty. Because when the students work at it, they all have to squat. So they, they are starting to call it squatty. Oh, we have squatty. So, um, but, but you know what? It, it's good because the classroom then it, it defronts the classroom, just like it says it. You know, that's a great thing to happen and they're all over the place. So I love that.
So, um, I have to say, uh, this summer I was coming into school for something and, um, the classroom next door to me was the book club for building thinking classrooms. Of course, you're always like, what, what's everybody doing in there? And you start questioning. And, um, I had a great conversation with Christie and Jenny Pasquale about building thinking classrooms. And Jenny had said to me, well, they do have a Facebook page for English, you know, that got me thinking. And as I started to engage in the book, there were two aha moments for me. Um, been teaching middle school English for 25 years. And the first one was students are studenting and that is so true. They come into a classroom and they do what you expect them to do. And as teachers, we go through the motions and this is what a good student looks like, right? They follow the process, they take the notes, they look engaged. Um, and then you hope they're learning, right? You hope you're giving them all the information that they need. And it was that moment where it was like, aha, but are they learning? Are they really taking away everything that I need them to? Um, and then the other aha moment was that, um, anonymity that kids seek in the classroom. Be when they don't know, right? They have a really good way of looking busy. So you don't call on them. So you don't ask those questions. Um, for me, those were the two things where it was like, aha, I have some changes I need to start making. Um, and this is a great way to go about it. And like Wendy said, I've only done two lessons. Um, I've done chalk talks in English before where you bring out the butcher paper and you have the kids collaborate and write. There is a true difference when you take it from a permanent surface, like a butchered paper. And when you also put in that vertical piece, the engagement really does increase. You see the kids engaged more. Um, they, I did notice that they do like to want to grab a chair and find their way to sit. Um, because that's where they're comfortable. And it is in that, those moments of making them kind of uncomfortable, where they get to that place where, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to do this. I'm gonna be ready. Um, so it was really eye opening for me. And especially after so many years in middle school English, that I'm learning as well as the kids are. Um, so we had two activities, um, things that I changed that we would have done typically in our classroom. Um, we were starting our argumentative, um, unit where kids were, are going to be looking and writing at argument essays. So one of the first things that I did was I had two argument essays, um, body paragraphs. One was a strong one, one was a weak one. I put both on the boards. They had to go up into their groups, analyze what they saw, collaborate on what they thought was a strong body paragraph, what was a weak one. And then they had to annotate and make lists and kind of delve into what they saw. Um, activity two was building on that where they had 10 pieces of evidence that they had to sort into two categories, relevant, non-relevant. So again, getting them into those discussions of what they thought, why they thought that. Where I could have very easily stood up in front of the class and said, here's a good example, here's a bad example, let's talk about that. But they were leading the discussions. They were the ones telling me what they thought, what conclusions they were coming to. Um, as Christie talked about the notes that they kind of capture at the end, we had a wonderful day with Ms. Provo and, um, Wendy, myself and Ms. Malinsky, where we kind of got to talk about the book and what we were seeing. And one of the things that brought, uh, was brought up was the idea of notes to your future selves. So after you have done these activities, what kinds of things do you want to remember? What do you want to write down so that as you go forward in these other lessons? Or you have things you want to refer back to in a notebook, it's a note to your future selves. So I could have very easily stood up there and said, when you have a good body paragraph, this is what you need to have X, Y, and Z. Well, they went to the boards, they discussed that, then they go back to their seats after the two days. And I said, what do you want to remember? What's important when you go to write your own body paragraph? Now they're invested in it. Now they've done the learning and they're writing it down for themselves to remember. So, whoops, did it skip? Where are my questions? My pictures? My pictures disappeared. That's okay. So, um, but I had, I had some pictures in there for you, but, um, you could see that the kids were engaged. They're in those groups, they're standing up, they're talking to each other. Um, the boards were messy and beautiful and that wonderful way, um, of getting them to realize they like to be perfect the first time they write. They want it to be a published piece. To understand that there's annotations everywhere and they look messy. And delving into that discussion was great, that thinking is visible and that you can see that. So it was really kind of cool. So I'm going to have you do what I would, um, do as an English activity today. And, um, before we start, I want you to visualize, because that's important. Close your eyes and I'm going to give you a sentence and I want you to create a picture in your mind. Okay, very simple sentence, the girl is sad. So cre- create a visual of what you think that looks like. Okay, now I'm going to ask you a few questions. All I want you to do is raise your hand if you answer yes to this question. Um, how many of you pictured a young child, toddler infant? Okay, how many of you pictured maybe a seven, eight, nine year old, somewhere in there? Anybody picture a teenager? Okay, um, anybody picture an older woman? Okay, um, who pictured somebody with blonde hair? Who pictured somebody with brown hair? What about red hair? Anybody picture her really crying really hard? How about maybe one or two tears? How many pictured her sobbing like she couldn't catch her breath? Anybody? Okay. The idea is, is that when we write, we have to make sure that we are writing descriptively for our readers to get that same picture. All of you pictured somebody slightly different, a scenario slightly different. So what I just gave you was a telling sentence. And this is what we typically do. We tell our stories, but we need to show our stories to our readers. So what I would like you to do in a moment is you are going to go to your boards in your groups. I'll randomly group you in just a moment. And you are going to take a telling sentence and begin to turn it into a showing sentence. Okay? And what I would typically do is then have the kids start to collaborate together and talk about, what do you think a showing sentence and has? Um, for time's sake, I'm going to tell you, it's sensory details, sensory details. So what I want you to do is take those telling sentences, turn them into showing paragraphs with sensory details. If I could just have you click the bottom with a flippity link. So this is a great resource that we found, um, that does randomize grouping. So at the top there, if you say groups of three and click on that for me, that will place you in two groups of three. Um, now you'll notice that we have an odd man out. So what happens is that we have found, I found when I had our meeting, that when there's an odd man out, it is best not to have a group of four, but to have two groups of, um, two. So Mr. Sumner, if I could have you join Mr. Frazier in your groups, that would be wonderful. So on the boards, you will see that the boards are numbered and that will correspond with your group number. Um, there are some whiteboard rules to remind you that the person who has the marker, I'll come around with a marker, is the only one doing the writing. You can talk to each other, you can trade off the marker as you work. Um, and you're going to have a couple of minutes to go ahead and build your showing paragraphs. Okay, are we ready? Okay, let's go.
Thank you.
help you, so that you're able to kind of continue contributing to what's happening in the classroom. So for something like this, I would spin the spinner, have somebody say, what happened at your board, what did you notice, what kind of thoughts did you have? Hopefully through this activity, you saw that instead of just sitting at your table doing this yourself, you were able to get a little bit further, you're able to bounce ideas off each other, you're learning from each other in those moments. So this is just one of those activities that I would have taken from something like a chalk talk, being a little quieter, being horizontal, not as engaging, and having it on the whiteboards, the kids are able to erase, to redraw, to highlight, to underline, to have all those visual learnings happening in those moments too, which would be fantastic for them to see as part of that writing process, right? That it can constantly evolve and change. So, this is just a little glimpse of, as Wendy said, that we're delving into the idea of what this looks like in different content areas, and the difference is amazing, it really is, to be able to see the kids get up, engaged, and really thinking. I mean, there's no better way to say it besides building Thinking Classrooms, so it's been really a great process.
So I have to hand it to Wendy and Tanya, I sent out on our last PD day, I said, hey, you know, I sent out an email real quick and said, hey, if you have a session that you're not sure where you want to go, go to Building Thinking Classrooms, maybe it's something we can unify around, and the response was amazing. And so, Dr. Zalinski and I have some colleagues in common in my previous district where we worked, about, we worked on accountable talk and how that changes the classroom, having kids being able to verbalize their ideas, and being able to be, you know, accountable to the content, and to the rigor, and also to their classmates. So, if we want to go back to the original presentation real quick, okay. So, yeah, so as we go forward, we're going to be looking at this as one of many engagement strategies, you guys know as well as anyone else, that we're competing against a lot of things in the classrooms, and so giving kids the opportunity to work with each other, it brings me back to the ideas of restorative practices and doing that the with, you know, this isn't a teacher to the students, this is a with, and so trying to embody that in everything that we do is really important, so. All right. I'm going to go ahead and let Mr. Lambden go through his part of the presentation on our renovation, it'll be quick, and then we'll move on to questions, I know that if you guys need to leave, if you, you're more than welcome to at this point, so, here we go.
Construction. All right, all right. So, it's been really fun, kind of getting to see this process start to come together. You know, Brad and I started construction, I don't even, the talks, two years ago, year and a half ago, I don't know what it was, and so now, to have Brian Melvin as our superintendent in the building, starting construction, it's been really kind of a joy to see that process start to be put together. So, he gave us some phasing, and I heard that this was the hot button item, to see where we're going over the next year and a half. So this is kind of where we are starting right now. This is the purple area, or the steam area, so this is what is currently being built in our, in the backyard right now. It's an 11,000 square foot approximately, steam addition, so I know I had the pleasure of taking Mr. Frazier on the roof, and I will extend the invitation to all of you, if you are not afraid of heights, and you can go help me find all the balls from recess up on the roof. And it's a great scenic vista of construction, but they have, they have started this area, so this is, and we'll go through some pictures, there's some demolition pictures, and this week, we had the first concrete trucks coming in pouring foundation, so it's really exciting. I think last I talked to him, we should be having a block start, hopefully next week, depending on, you know, weather. So, but that is what is currently going on. So what is happening this summer, so June 12th, the day after all the teachers leave, they are going to be doing everything in light blue, so it's quite extensive over the summer. So, I should say, the only other thing that's been currently going on, if you look out there, kind of through the glass, you can see the lights, all the lights are being replaced through the whole building right now, so those are the new LED lights. But in the summer, so in all of these spaces, the light blue spaces, both A pod and B pod, and in here, will be flooring in some places, and here we're getting beautiful vinyl flooring, which is going to be much nicer than, please don't look down, the stains on the floor. In all these spaces, you're getting the new technology, an extra window, it's going to be more symmetrical to all the classrooms, it's going to be a little bit more uniform, with a little bit more whiteboard space with the new technology, so the lights are already being done, so that's, we're really excited about that. We'll be getting the new covered walkway similar to Hillside and Cook, and then kind of a refresh of our music band and orchestra spaces, so that'll be, if you've not been there, that still looks like it's the 70s, it's going to be really nice when that's done. The only other big thing this summer is this area, which if you've taken a walk in our, at Meads Mill, there's this giant locker banks just beyond our counseling, which is the congregation area for all of our students, and all of that will be gone. So we will not have those congregated lockers, we'll have as lockers kind of spread around, a little bit more space for all the kids to get to their stuff, but those will be some really beautiful collaboration spaces, so that's the summer. Starting in December is when it starts to get fun inside the building, we will have a temporary kitchen built in our current boys locker room space, kind of here in red, and then at that point, they're going to shut down the cafeteria in orange, and then we will have a half gym, half cafeteria space for the better part of next spring, so if you, so hopefully, we will invite you now, if you have a special talent, we will put you up in a room for recess, and please demonstrate that special talent and show the kids, we will appreciate that, because that is, if you know January, February, March, in recess time, it's exciting. So, no, it's, we're going to start to think collaboratively, how does that space look? But by next, end of 2026, we will have a gym, new cafeteria, and everything will be beautiful, so we're really excited to get that process started. So this is kind of a drawing of the locker area, so to be some very cool collaboration spaces, and really that was the theme that we went into this with, was create as many collaboration spaces to do these, the things like Building Thinking Classrooms, to get the kids moving out, doing different projects. So, this is the current construction, so just a few pictures. This is looking down into the courtyard, this is where our greenhouse was, so that's kind of that process, and they've taken off some of the siding, this is they're starting to dig for plumbing, an excavator, because, you know, who doesn't love an excavator? Sorry, I have a three-year-old who really loves excavators. Just some additional construction pictures, and putting in the plumbing and underneath of the siding. And this is kind of one of those big monumentous days where they were tearing down the hallway, so if you see, there's some drywall right there, right behind that is our seventh grade hallway, hallway to nowhere, so our bathrooms that are there are currently exposed outside to the weather, so there's plastic covering, they swear it's okay. So, no, Brian's doing a great job, it really is coming together nicely. And in the meantime, they built these temporary walls, these are just the kind of a highlight of the skills of our students, that they really wanted to create a beautiful space. This is over near Ms. Collins' room currently, this one is right out here, it's a beautiful mural, this was another one of our temporary murals in the seventh grade area, and then this is a more permanent mural right outside of our art room done by our students, so really excellent job by Ms. Hopkins to get the students to kind of, to get to up with the work in for that. And then, we have Patriot. So in the process, in the process of construction, you just never know what you're going to find in the morning, we get a call, and it's Ms. Mary Beth Teed, who is our cafeteria manager, calls us down, and she goes, "We have a cat." So, what do you mean, "we have a cat?" "We have a cat." So, he is, I think, was one week old, Brian found him in the construction process, we as a building adopted him, he's not here permanently, he's not a new...
We have a policy for that.
But, we will have a pet policy, but, but Ms. Martin did find, I think, a friend of hers to adopt him permanently, but we will get, we are getting updated pictures, so this is a picture as of, I think, Friday. So, that is Patriot, the cat. And that's it, so thank you, and if you, really, if you want to come over and see any of it, I will walk you through all of it.
He's not joking, I've been on the roof many times, it's kind of a cool look, to go up there and look down on the construction. I want to thank you guys so much, and just highlight the wonderful staff and students that we have here at Meads Mill, and all the wonderful work that's going on, so thank you so much for your time and attention tonight, and I'll turn it over if you guys have any questions. I think most of our presentation groups have had to leave, but I'm happy to be here, and some of the other teachers who presented as well.
I mean, I think most of my questions were geared towards the kids, I am curious, though, I think this one could go for the teachers and staff, with the workforce, do you think having a cool name like Dust Inspector and Computer Captain helps the process? Because I'd love to collaborate and like come up with cool names for all the chores at my house that nobody wants.
You just gotta have them apply, that's the key, that's the key, they love to apply, they love to interview. It's the only place, I'm sure, in Northville, where you'll see 12-year-old boys, you know, voluntarily dusting things, and it's incredible, and it's, it sounds like such a simple thing, but just to see the, just the pride that they take, and being able to move around the school, and take care of these jobs, and do these things, and just really contribute to the community, that part of community that every single person is needed and necessary, and has a role to play, is really important. So, anybody? Okay.
How do you, I guess my other, to go, sorry, to go along with that, it, there was something about like salary jobs and weekly jobs, are there, it sounded like, you know, some kids are really getting into it and figuring out which jobs are the best return of their time and investment. So how do you, can, do you incorporate that into the discussion at all, or is it really just middle schoolers being middle schoolers?
Well, it's middle schoolers being middle schoolers, for sure, but there is, you know, they talk amongst themselves about what's the most desired, so we do our hallway DJs, so kids can apply and have their music played for the week during passing time, and that's great, you know, the kids will, "Oh, that's my song," and, you know, so all of those different things, when we launched the program, we had all of the kids come into the fishbowl and just kind of walk through the jobs and the purposes of the jobs, and they were all ears, they were really excited to be able to participate in it, so it's been really successful for us, so.
I wanted to know, because in order to keep them motivated, you have to have some really great items that are enticing them, because if you're paying $500 points, what do you have that is that much, that is keeping them interested in the jobs?
It's the magic, it's just the magic of having, what's that? Oh, so, well, that's, we also instituted pop-up sales here, where we have, once a week, there'll be random sales where students can use their Patriot Pride cards to buy different items, during Ramadan, we made sure that those were non-food items, so that all of our students could still participate, they use them to get into the parties, we also have the school store, and teachers have their own stores in their classroom where students can buy certain privileges and things like that. I mean, it's just that fun way to keep them engaged in earning those, and, you know, there's, there have been, I don't know if it's happened so far this, this year, but you know, kids will sell things out of their lockers using those, I mean, they're, they're very creative, they're one step ahead of us all the time, so they find ways, yeah.
I did want to mention the Lit, I really loved that program, and I did want to point out, I mean, I love working with women and lifting them up, and I just think, you know, I noticed an example of Dr. Zalinski talking about the Thinking classes, and she's giving credit to Ms. Mauer and Ms. Pascal, and it's so wonderful to see the leadership from our leaders, showing the girls how to do that, and the positive affirmations.
We have a policy.
But we will have a pet policy, but, but Ms. Ms. Martin did find, I think, a friend of hers to adopt him permanently. But we will get, we are getting updated pictures. So this is a picture as of, I think, Friday. So that is Patriot, the cat. And that's it. So thank you. And if you, I really, if you want to come over and see any of it, I will walk you through all of it.
He's not joking. I've been on the roof many times. It's kind of a cool look to go up there and look down on the construction. I want to thank you guys so much and just highlight the wonderful staff and students that we have here at Meads Mill and all the wonderful work that's going on. So thank you so much for your time and attention tonight. And I'll turn it over if you guys have any questions. I think most of our presentation groups have had to leave, but I'm, I'm happy to be here and some of the other teachers who presented as well.
I mean, I think most of my questions were geared towards the, the kids. I am curious though, I think this one could go for the, the teachers and staff. With the workforce, do you think having a cool name like dust inspector and computer captain helps the process? Because I'd love to collaborate and like come up with cool names for all the chores at my house.
You just, you gotta have them apply. That's the key. That's the key. They love to apply. They love to interview. It's the only place I'm sure in Northville where you'll, you'll see 12-year-old boys, you know, voluntarily dusting things. And it, it's incredible. And it's, it sounds like such a simple thing, but just to see the, just the pride that they take and being able to move around the school and take care of these jobs and do these things. And just really contribute to the community, that part of community that every single person is needed and necessary and has a role to play is really important. So anybody.
How do you, I guess my other, to go, sorry, to go along with that. There was something about like salary jobs and weekly jobs. Are there, it sounded like, you know, some kids are really getting into it and figuring out which jobs are the best return of their time and investment. So how do you, can, do you incorporate that into the discussion at all? Or is it really just middle schoolers being middle schoolers?
Middle schoolers being middle schoolers for sure. But there is, you know, they talk amongst themselves about what's the most desired. So we do our hallway DJ. So kids can apply and have their music played for the week during passing time. And that's great. You know, the kids will, oh, that's my song. And you know, so all of those different things. When we launched the program, we had all of the kids come into the fishbowl and just kind of walk through the jobs and the purposes of the jobs. And they were all ears. They were really excited to be able to participate in it. So it's been really successful for us. So.
I wanted to know, because in order to keep them motivated, you have to have some really great items that are enticing them. Because if you're paying $500 points, what do you have that is that much that is keeping them interested in the jobs?
The magic. It's just the magic of, of having, what's that? Oh, so, well, that's, we also instituted pop-up sales here where we have, once a week, there'll be random sales where students can use their Patriot pride cards to buy different items. During Ramadan, we made sure that those were non-food items so that all of our students could still participate. They use them to get into the parties. We also have the school store. And teachers have their own stores in their classroom where students can buy certain privileges and things like that. I mean, it's just that fun way to keep them engaged and, and earning those. And you know, there's, there have been. I, I don't know if it's happened so far this, this year, but you know, kids will sell things out of their lockers using those. I mean, they're, they're very creative. They're one step ahead of us all the time. So they find ways. Yeah.
I did want to mention the Lit. I really loved that program. And I did want to point out, I mean, I love working with women and lifting them, lifting them up. And I just think, you know, I noticed an example of Dr. Zelinski talking about the thinking classes. And she's giving credit to Ms. Mauer and Ms. Pascal. And it's so wonderful to see the leadership from our leaders showing the girls how to do that. And the positive affirmations were amazing. I see a statistic here that, you know, 59% of girls reported they liked to, they like being in charge. But more than half said they are afraid to lead because they don't want others to think they're bossy. So I just definitely would like, I try it with my own children as well. Take away bossy, say leadership skills. Take away emotional, say passionate, you know. So I, I love that program. And so thank you also, Dr. Zelinski, for always being a positive influence.
I also love that program. Knowing Ms. Provo for almost 10 years now, we used to work together at the high school. I am not surprised to see any of these amazing things happening here under her leadership. Especially the, the Lit group. I mean, just looking at the statistics in, in this, you know, I can't, well, I was a middle school girl and it wasn't fun back then. I hope it's a little more fun now because there's a lot more awareness around supporting girls and helping them see what they can do is amazing. And as the aunt of a fifth grader going into sixth grade, I know it's just such a difficult time right now. So thank you for doing that work for our girls.
And the girls really wanted you guys to have those, the index there. That was the thing I think that really touched them and spurred them into wanting to create a space here for girls. And I'm so excited to see where it will go from here. And we're going to try to connect with Hillside and, and do some activities together with them as well.
Especially with, since all, it seemed like all of the girls were in eighth grade. You know, moving on to the high school, there's so many opportunities at the high school for kids to create their own clubs. And so, I mean, with these girls, they were talking about getting the younger kids involved here. But also when they move up to the high school, there's opportunity for them to start this as a new club at the high school too.
Absolutely.
It's exciting.
I want to, I, I'm not usually the emotional one on the board. I don't think. I usually share that with Melissa. But I, I was really touched by the girls index and really thinking about, I don't know, this is such an awesome experience to come here. Like this is your first year leading Meads Mill. You were such a force at Hillside. And I know you were forced also at the high school. And I just feel like the lid has been like ripped off and we're like boom, like the glass ceiling is being shattered. And that, I'm really excited to see just how this continues and how girls' voices are brought up to a, you know, competitive level with the boys that I know that we also, as the school board, we often have the lens about standardized testing, which no one likes standardized testing, but it is a way to measure like how are kids learning? But we, they can't learn if they're not thinking. And so building this thinking experience and looking at, you know, we know that sometimes the girls' test scores, particularly in math, are lower than we would like. So I'm just really thrilled with the leadership that has gotten us to this place to say, yeah, this is the next frontier for us to tackle that I think Northville leads in such a really special way. So I am, I'm blown away. I almost got teary to look at like, I wish I would have had this in middle school or high school. Like.
Just the empowerment of having that knowledge, I think, really changed those girls. And I, and you know, and not just a girls' group, looking at different affinity groups that we can bring together at school and, and giving kids that safe place with people like them as they navigate middle school, which as Ms. Mauer said, it's definitely not the best time. If you've ever talked, you know, talked to, I always challenge kids to go home and talk to your parents, ask them about middle school. You know, and, and it doesn't have to be that way. It can be dynamic and kids can learn about their strengths and weaknesses and where they're going and what they're passionate about. So that's what we're, we're aiming for. So thank you.
It's phenomenal.
Actually, the pressure on girls, you can detect at the third grade level. So you know, the trickle up will be, you know, powerful when they move on to high school. But maybe there'll be some trickle down to try to plant some early seeds in the elementary school level, young ladies.
These young ladies, the eighth graders are going to be going into the sixth grade seminars and talking with the students there. And, and we are encouraging all students to, you know, create any clubs that they feel like there's a need for. So.
I did want to say, I know, I think it was maybe three years ago, maybe it was two years ago. But when we added the period product dispensers, I thought there was a line item in the budget that would continue to fund those supplies going forward. So I don't know.
So I mean, very bluntly, I'll just say that the girls here report that those, they're, they're, they're not usable for them for the most part. And so that's where that need came from, was a discussion in that group of like where the, that where those aren't working for us. How do we get other things? So we've been in contact with central office, trying to find a way to do that. And one of our jobs will be to make sure that those baskets are, you know, stocked in the, the restrooms and making sure that they're, you know, clean and comfortable for, for our students. So.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I just wanted to follow up to say, is there anything the board can do to make that more, you know, just more available or?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure exactly how, you know, what the best way is to address it. But through the, the girls through the club are going to be exploring that a little bit more. So the first idea is the drive to, to start there with the teen-sized products and then go from there.
That's beautiful. No, I think it's also, you know, for them to advocate for what they need is a beautiful thing.
Right.
And it's good information for us as well. And it was the initiative of a student at the high school level really that, you know, stimulated that action at our, at our meeting. So it's all been student-driven. But if there's some adaptation and the kind of range of products by whatever metric, you know, we would like to see that happen.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I'll share that with them as well.
Thank you so much. This was a great presentation. I loved getting a more of a deeper dive into the building thinking classrooms and the logic behind it and the thinking that goes into it. So that was, that was great. So thank you all for that. And I just love the, the real world experiences that these kids are getting. And I, you know, I, I've had the privilege of being in this building so much this year and seeing, and I, you know, I see the kids doing their jobs. Whether it's coming down to the office to pick up all the, the drop-offs to take the class. And they're so excited to do it. And I see the kids in the, in the hallways dusting the top of the lockers where, you know, you wouldn't think. And it's, it's just great to see them take that ownership and have the pride in it and, you know, build those skills that'll be useful. Same thing with, you know, the, the, the group collaboration and the whiteboards. You know, that's one thing that's, that's so valuable out in the real world when you, you know, get into design firms and stuff and working as a group and brainstorming. So it's, it's just great to see all the real world experiences that they're getting. So thank you very much. And I appreciate Ms. Provo, all the, you know, all the, all the work you've done in, in bringing change and supporting change from the teachers this year. So it's, it's been wonderful. Thank you very much. Absolutely.
And I'll just say, safe travels tomorrow and much love and gratitude to each of you as I look at the teachers and showing how the universal approach to thinking classrooms, and it doesn't have to be simply a mathematics piece. I think of Dr. Brock and leading the coaching office and building that coaching office. I think of our cult team. And just want to sincerely say thank you for advocating for each of our kids. It means a ton. And may 3:00 greet you the way it greets you. But have a one, have a wonderful, we get the weather and have a great time with the kids. Thank you all.
All right.
Right?
Cool.
So go home and sleep and prepare, but thank you all so much. The Northville High School yearbook, we just got that in. I'll bring it to the Cow meeting. It looks fantastic. Any yearbook people on the board who did the yearbook in high school or college? A lot of late nights, a lot of work. But really, it's beautiful. It's entitled, "All the Little Things." You'll see it up there. And here they are. And I've looked through a bit of it this week and it's magic. So any late nights or? One or two? One or two? So why don't, if you guys could just grab a mic, if there's one handy, and maybe give us a little bit of an encapsulation of what it's like to really capture a year at the fourth largest high school in the state of Michigan.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. To begin, I'm Renata Diaz. I'm a senior and I was one of the editors.
Hi, my name is Sophia Marco Tulio and I'm a senior and also one of the editors for this year's book.
So we began preparing for this year's yearbook last spring. We're very excited to have this privilege of creating a special book that will both commemorate each class and represent all of the students at Northville High School.
When considering what to make our theme, we, we thought about how books typically remember the big life-changing moments that define the year. This school year, that included the Olympics, an election, and a breakthrough season for the Detroit Lions. However, instead of focusing on these big things that happened, we chose to emphasize the little moments that occurred in our everyday lives.
For example, while the Olympics were going on during the summer, 30 kids from our school were on a trip to Europe with our science teacher, Mrs. Lowe's. One of them was Sophia. So we decided to focus on that instead of the Olympics. When the election occurred in November, while everyone was going like to the schools and voting, our students were enjoying a day off with their friends or playing in our annual powder puff game, where the seniors beat the juniors, as usual. And at the end of the day, we wanted to prioritize the little moments that made our everyday lives special instead of just the big moments that the rest of the world remembers.
Our theme, "All the Little Things," has an all-black cover with stripes of color going through to represent the vibrancy of the little moments in our lives. The rest of the book contains our palette of eight completely different colors that match the energy of each story that our staffers were able to capture. In addition, all of our section divider's main photos, which you can see on pages two, four, 40, 80, 114, and 150, feature black and white photos with one individual person emphasized in color to demonstrate one person's experience within the individual scenes that occurred in our school.
So when we began approaching this year, we thought about how could we maximize our resources? Compared to previous years, especially last year, our staff has nearly doubled in size. And to us, that meant more content. Using this approach, our amazing staffers helped us find the many little stories that occurred in each of our students' lives. We incorporated those little moments in the folios you can see at the bottom of every single page. This is where we asked students about their favorite part of the week or something they want to remember in 10 years. And we included their quotes to encapsulate the importance of the little moments that happened every single week.
This year's staff met every single deadline, which is an impressive feat in your book. We would like to thank our superintendent, Dr. Weber, and our Board of Education for supporting the 2025 staff. The board has once again graciously offered to donate their copies to graduating seniors experiencing financial difficulty. Thank you for your generosity and support.
Today, we brought you guys two copies of this year's book to share. We hope you enjoy the celebration of Northville High School. And with that, we leave you with the opportunity to see what this year's staff worked so hard to create. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a little bit of a chance last night to, I pried it out of my son's hands so I could take a look at it. Because I, I knew that you guys were going to be here tonight. And it's really awesome to hear some of the, like, background of, you know, I was looking at it and I'm like, I wonder if there's a meaning behind the colors, the stripes on the front. There is. That's awesome. I figured there was, but it's really awesome to hear the background and some of the, the thought process behind the details. So, good job. And it's gigantic. Oh, my gosh.
That doesn't even have the insert too. I, I think everyone's going to take over from Melissa tonight in emotional. Thank you so much. You have both done a lovely job and we're going to miss you next year. So thanks for giving your time and talents all this time. I have a senior and a Ms. Provo. It's a little hard not to just see this and realize this is, well, next year I'll be $75 richer. But I will miss having the yearbook and I really do appreciate the time and effort that you put into it. And I don't know what you're planning on doing next year, but hopefully you'll continue to develop these skills and use them in a way that suits you. So, thank you.
And maybe in 20 years, at your reunion, like I just had, you'll break that out with a bunch of people you haven't seen in almost 20 years. And you'll look through it and you'll laugh and you'll reminisce. And I still have all the yearbooks from when I was in high school and actually every year that I taught. So at all the schools that I taught. And they're just, they're great. They're fond mementos. And I still like to go through my dad's. He graduated in the seventies. So, you know, just, just really cool, like time capsules to look back and, and kind of remember fondly those times. So.
Yeah, when we go through with like coming up with a theme and what do, what do we want to represent? We go through all of the other yearbooks from previous years because we have our cupboards with every single yearbook. And one of them was our advisor, Ms. Badetoy, the one that she was the editor for. So we were just looking through it for like inspiration on like everything that she did. And she was like, we tried to carry the theme from her senior yearbook into ours too. Because hers was about the point. So it was like about points in time. So ours was like the little things in time. Yeah, it was like kind of fun.
Well, you would have seen my husband in one or two or three or four of them. So very cool.
Amazing work. Lots to be proud of.
Quite a legacy. Yeah. Thank you for creating it and leaving it for the, those coming behind you.
Great gift to your class too.
See you at graduation.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Yes. Okay. Next up, we have our above and B, our ABCD awards.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And I believe in first.
You are kicking us off. Yes.
Well, I will be the first person on the list. And is Ms. Danaa Sandia here tonight?
She's, she's going to Washington.
Oh, she's in bed. Bless her heart.
She's in bed.
I actually, I'm relieved if, if she's going to Washington that she's resting because I know that's going to be a great trip, but it's going to be a lot. But I am happy to share with those of us who are still here at this moment that she had five nominators raise her voice or her job up for the ABDC, ABCD award. There were two, three students, a colleague and a parent, who took the time to comment on what a difference she's made. So the words that jumped out at me, I had, you know, I'm going to freelance a little bit here, was that she is inclusive in her classroom. She inspires those that she works with and that she ignites learning in these students. Okay, so those are the organizing themes. But the first nominator was a parent who says, Ms. Sandia, am I saying? Okay. Sandia creates an environment in her classroom where kids feel safe, valued, excited to learn, where there are a room full of diverse books for her students to feel seen in and to realize their connections to other kids. Thus the word inclusive from that parent's comment. Her colleague says, Ms. Sandia is an exceptional teacher and colleague. She holds her students to the highest standards while learning their respect. Her unmatched work ethic and the sacrifices that she makes of her own time to help her students and make sure that their needs are met is notable. She goes far beyond teaching curriculum and is truly the best role model that an eighth grader could ever have. She also mentioned that she solidly supports her colleagues always, which I think is another aspect of being a really remarkable teacher. And I, I felt that this comment from her colleague addressed how inspired she was as an educator. And then finally, the three students. The first student said, Ms. Sandia has gone out of her way to make me laugh every day. She encourages me to be my best self. The second student says, Ms. Sandia is a great English teacher who is very easy to talk to. She offers students extra support and additional practice. She's flexible with her assignments and her homework. And she supports students by talking them through it, asking questions, ah, those inspired questions, and answering when we have, when we aren't sure. This makes students want to come to her class and projects are fun. And the third student says, at the beginning of the school year, this is the honesty of a middle school, school student, I perceived ELA as dull and overwhelming, crowded with rules and expectations. That's an honest fear, you know? So however, once Mrs. Sandia began teaching, she transformed the curriculum into a dynamic and enjoyable journey for me. That's a big change. I felt happy, relaxed, realizing that this class was going to be a rewarding experience. So that's how she ignites learning in those three students. So Mrs. Sandia, we are so fortunate to have you working with our students. Our middle school students run ELA and lifting up and preparing those eighth graders for the next journey into the high school. So congratulations to you.
All right. I have the next one. Jennifer Myers-Cam. Is she here tonight? Awesome. She's a science teacher. She's a science teacher here, and she has been nominated by two students. Student one says, she is my favorite teacher at the school because she always makes science fun. She always listens to us. She's honest with us. And she takes time out of her day to make class fun. She makes all of our lessons so exciting and fun. So apparently, it is fun in your class. Student number two, she is always funny, kind, and she makes science fun. And she never gets mad when the class is loud. So congratulations.
Oh, there's our.
She's amazing.
My buddy.
Congratulations.
I have the distinct honor of presenting Melissa Provo her A B C D award. She was nominated by a student. And this student says, one example that I have, I'm not quite sure what the example is of, but probably just how awesome you are. That part was left out of here. That I have is she redecorated the office in one weekend, taking her time and most likely money just so the office would be more welcoming. And again, Melissa is just a wonderful leader and advocate for students and just people in general. She's a wonderful human, and we are so lucky to have her. And I'm very lucky to call her my friend. So.
Coming up, Melissa.
All right, I have Officer McFadden. I don't see him. He's hard to miss.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Like he does stand out. A colleague nominated him. Officer McFadden goes above and beyond every day it means mail. His attention to detail is unmatched as he has a very important job of ensuring that everyone in the school is safe. The kids have learned that he is a gentle giant, and he always has a smile on his face. He was always willing to hang out with the kids playing Quiz Bowl and help out in the classroom when needed. We are so lucky to have him. And I definitely echo that sentiment. I actually was at the high school and some, one of the students just came up to speak with him and just, it was so sweet because he was like, hey, they're friends. And he's wonderful. I'm glad he got a promotion, but he sure will be missed. So thank you, Officer McFadden. Is Ms. Dow here? No, okay. Well, Ms. Dow was nominated by a student. And this student said, she helped me all three years of middle school on improving my grade and time management and also was an overall nice teacher who wanted to help anyone succeed. So thank you very much, Ms. Dow, for all your time and talents with your students.
I'm honored to present another award this evening to Mrs. Cullen. Is Mrs. Cullen here tonight? Nope, okay. Mrs. Cullen was nominated by a few students. And they write, Mrs. Cullen has gone above and beyond with her kindness towards her students, and it has had a major impact on all of us. She also helps when people do not understand a lesson or assignment, no matter how big the lesson or assignment is. The next student writes, this teacher has never judged someone and is very understanding of students and their lives outside of school. And the last student writes, this person always makes her class fun and makes everyone feel like they belong. So thank you, Mrs. Cullen.
I will wrap it up here with honoring Shelley Castor-Taylor. Here, no.
We have one more after you.
Oh, do we? We have one more?
There's one more.
Was it not on the screen? Okay, okay, okay. Not, not wrap it up. But so we got, Ms. Castor-Taylor was nominated by a student. The student wrote, at the beginning of the school year, I thought social studies was boring and complicated. However, once Ms. Castor-Taylor began teaching the lessons about religion and our ancient ancestors, I quickly gained confidence and started to truly enjoy the subject. This is why I proudly nominated Ms. Castor-Taylor for the A B C D award. And I just want to also add that this, so this weekend when I talked at the dinner table that I was going to give this award, my oldest Ezra probably went on for five minutes just talking about how influential Ms. Castor-Taylor was and how supportive through some difficult times. So, thank you.
All right, and our last A B C, A B C D award for the night is with Ms. Wendy Martin. Glad that you were able to stay with us. It's a long wait. A parent nominated you for this award. And the parent says, Mrs. Martin is the best teacher, said this parent's son at dinner. For a middle school student who rarely provides much positive insight into his school day, he went on to share what he had learned today regarding the periodic table and chemical compounds. This was certainly not the first time he spoke highly of Mrs. Martin, how she teaches and what he learns in her class. This parent says, all three of her children have been fortunate enough to have Mrs. Martin as their science teacher. And this parent is so grateful. Mrs. Martin is warm, kind, friendly, and supportive. She is invested in her students, and it is evident that she likes what she does. Thank you for being who you are, Mrs. Martin, and know that you are making an impact. And I imagine we're going to have a hundred more of these after the building thinking classrooms really takes a hold next year. Okay, that is our last one there. Is there anything else on the superintendent report tonight?
Um, yeah. Yesterday, I got a call from Representative Colazar, and I will be joining him as the governor signs House Bill 5803. He and I, well, we probably had nine or 10 phone calls that evening, and that's a 3% overcharged educators. And so he called me yesterday and wanted to thank me for the role in that. And so representing all of our teachers and all of our educators in Northville and throughout the state in, in eliminating an overpayment they were making. So I will represent us while they're on Tuesday morning.
Wonderful. Thank you. What a great opportunity. Awesome. All right, I guess this is our first opportunity for public comment. Do we have any blue cards? All right, no blue cards tonight. Next, we have some new hires. So I will turn it over to you, Ms. Meyer.
I am so excited that we're already, I mean, we're just talking about the yearbook. We already planned ahead for the 25, 26 school year. Keep this rolling. So this is very exciting already. We, I'm excited to bring forward Motion 103 that the Board Award Probationary NEA Teacher Contracts to the following staff for the 25, 26 school year. Ashley Brandenburg, Rachel Cornelia, Elise Mickovich, and Trent Theasson. And I apologize if I mispronounced anyone's name, but I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Summer.
Hold on, we need.
Oh, I'm sorry. Support. Thank you.
Okay, all right. We have a motion properly presented by Ms. Meyer, supported by Dr. Kembo Vitale. And now.
All right, thank you, Secretary Meyer. Thank you, President, Secretary Meyer, President McIntyre. Yes, excited to bring some new hires forward this evening. There are four in all, and three of them are the result of retirements. One, our Cook hire is a result of opening a new classroom. And these are all for the 25, 26 school year. First and foremost, Trent Tyson. He coaches baseball, and they had a game this evening. Hopefully, they got it in with the weather, but he could not join us. But we're excited to recommend him this evening for a mathematics position at Northville High School. Trent started his career in Brentwood, Tennessee, before coming back home to Michigan, where he's been teaching at Canton High School for the last couple of years. As I mentioned, he coaches baseball at Canton High School after a successful career himself on the diamond at Ball State University, where he graduated with his bachelor's degree in secondary education with a mathematics focus. Trent also recently completed his master's degree in curriculum and instruction at Western Governors University. His references discuss the wonderful student relationships he creates and maintains, as well as the lessons he creates to engage students in their learning. The high school hiring team was thrilled with Trent's candidacy and is excited to have him join the wonderful staff at N H S. French teacher, Dr. Ashley Brandenburg. Ashley possesses a PhD in Romance Studies with a focus on French and Italian from Cornell University, where she also taught. Before pursuing her PhD at Cornell, she completed her bachelor's degree at Michigan State University in French, followed by her master's degree in Romance Studies at Cornell. Ashley has received various honors along the way throughout her academic career. In addition to her time teaching at Cornell, she also taught at the post-secondary level in Arizona, including time at Arizona State University. Despite her experience in post-secondary academia, the opportunity to work with younger students pulled her into K-12 education, where she has been teaching regularly since 2020, beginning in Oregon at the middle school level. Most recently, she has been teaching at Seum High School in Birmingham. Certified in both French and English, Ashley's references raved about her ability to design curriculum, her instructional skills, and the great connection she makes with students. I, our, excuse me, our hiring team was thoroughly impressed with Ashley's background and skill set. And we are excited to recommend Dr. Ashley Brandenburg for hire, Brandenburg for hire this evening. Ashley's back there in the, in the corner. Special Education Resource Room teacher, Elise Mackawick. Elise is a recent graduate of Michigan State University, similar to Ashley, although just, just this past spring, Elise graduated from MSU, where she completed her bachelor's degree in learning disabilities. She's also currently pursuing her master's degree in cognitive impairments. This past year, Elise completed her student teaching first in a fourth grade classroom, general education setting, before finishing it off this past semester at Eastwood, at East Kentwood High School in a self-contained classroom. It's in that classroom where Elise really found a connection with students with special needs and was able to develop her passion in working with students with special needs. Again, the interview team at the high school was thoroughly impressed with Elise's steady and calm confidence, especially for someone who's just entering the profession. Her passion for supporting students with special needs was a consistent theme throughout her interview. And her references were extremely complimentary of her work ethic, her interactions with students, as well as her overall rapport with students. As such, I'm pleased to recommend Elise Mackawick for hire this evening. And then last, but certainly not least, for Cook, our Cook School, we're pleased to recommend Ms. Rachel Cornelia for a position at Cook School. Rachel began her career in some local districts as both an elementary teacher and special education teacher, including time in a center-based program similar, similar to Cook. After taking a short break from teaching to spend important time with her family, she returned to the profession and currently serves as an S X I classroom teacher for Livingston Educational Service Agency. Rachel completed her bachelor's degree in special education, specializing in cognitive impairment from Eastern Michigan University. Her's ma, her master's degree, also from E M U, is in reading. One of the many positive comments I received in checking Rachel's references came from a former supervisor who said, her passion is working with students who have special needs, and she puts the needs of students first. Our interview team walked away with that very impression during its interview with Rachel and see her as an excellent addition to our Cook family and to N P S. As such, I'm also pleased to recommend Ms. Rachel Cornelia for hire this evening with Northville Public Schools. So on behalf of the Central Office Administrative Team, I recommend that the Board of Education approve a probationary contract for Trent Tyson, Dr. Ashley Brandenburg, Elise Mackawick, and Rachel Cornelia for the 25, 26 school year. Please refer to the supporting documents in your board packet about each candidate. Thank you.
Yes, I'm really great. Yeah, really great new staff. And I really love the breadth and depth of experience and just, man, it's awesome. Anything else? Anybody want to say?
No.
All right. All right, let's, well, we have to go ahead with our vote. Let's vote first. We got to vote first. All in favor? All in favor of this? Aye.
Probably vote.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now we can say, welcome to Northville. Congratulations. Great.
Nice.
That's amazing.
I don't want to draw too much attention to the fact that my daughter will be taking.
Maybe my child will switch languages.
Wonderful. It's great. Yeah, really great additions. Okay, all right, that's official. Pardon me? Okay, we good? All right, next, do we have any added agenda items? There are none, okay? And then we have one more opportunity for public comment. Any public commentators? No? Okay. And then do we have questions and comments from board members? It feels like we've been off for a couple of weeks. So we're back in the groove. I wanted to make sure everybody saw the nitty-gritty details for graduation. So the car parade will be Saturday. Graduation will be Sunday.
Oh, okay, nice.
Perfect, okay.
Okay.
Okay, cool. Just wanted to make sure that we're tuning into that. It's coming up fast.
Yeah, click on that link. There's a lot of essential information.
Yep, but okay, I appreciate knowing that. We can talk about that more next week. Super. Anybody else have any other?
I just wanted to follow up on your follow-up. I just, uh, at another time of like more information regarding the products that we discussed earlier. And maybe, I don't know if this may want to put on a collagen or are we just something that you could relay in a conversation or something like that? It doesn't need to be formal. I just would like some follow-up feedback about what the issue is in particular. There's not a discussion we have to have right now, but.
That's fair. I like that.
So I would appreciate, have some more.
Clarity and build a support.
Around that.
Support the students.
Make sure that we're supporting them in the best way possible because I don't want to offer them something that we're not actually able to provide. That isn't meeting their needs.
Yeah, that isn't.
I think on an, um, like an institutional level, unfortunately, like, you know, when you procure, like, um, we all know schools, like what they call a paper towel that you can't absorb anything with around stuff, right? That we all, um, that, uh, that could very well be the issue. And if that is the case, I'm really grateful to serve beside a board of education that wants to do better. I mean, this is a biological function. It's like, so thank you.
Yeah. No, thank you. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments or?
On a totally different note, um, the rowing team had their biggest regatta this weekend, this past weekend. And it was the, the Midwest Regatta, which.
How many total rowers were there?
Oh, it was like thousands.
Wow.
Um, there were almost 50 schools there. It was mayhem. But it's the regatta where boats qualify for nationals. And we had six boats qualify for nationals, which was the biggest qualifying year ever, including, um, the first novice boat that qualified. So their brand new freshman qualified to go to nationals. So.
Wow.
It's, and then of course we're all scrambling because next weekend is state championship here. Local, thank goodness, but the following weekend is nationals. And so all the, and I'm very lucky that my son is one of those qualifiers. So, but there's going to be a lot of very excited kids going to, uh, to youth nationals.
And where is that?
Where is that at?
Well, this is where it gets confusing. Uh, there's two. So first place winners qualify to go to youth nationals in Florida. And they have to miss the last day of school. So we're still talking about that. But, um, and then first and second place qualifiers go to scholastic nationals where only schools can compete. And that's in New Jersey. So.
Wow.
I know. It's, I was, we were not prepared for that. So.
Speaking of qualifying, the video that I watched of the, um, the launch for the aerospace team looked really, is there any? I don't, I don't know. Was there, was it, was there placement? I don't know. Like, and it's fine. I mean, you know, I know it's all about.
Well, I mean, the, the aspect of the, the, uh, at the steam fair that, um, the N E F put on and, and all of you came to and went to, you saw the rocket. In the awe of talking to these young people who 13 months ago really didn't know too much about it. And to have the only rocket go down there from Michigan. And, uh, and it went well, uh, and they had to delay the launch a little bit due to weather. But we'll be doing a news story on that.
Oh, very cool.
So they have a opportunity to, to further talk about what they've done.
Oh, wonderful. I love the commentary as it was launching, the gentleman who was like, it was like a golf or something. He's like, and now it's up and now it's like 20. Good thing, because you can't actually see it. So you do need someone to kind of guide your.
Yes. Yeah.
Real quick, have we, have we met since the early childhood art exhibit? I can't, my brain doesn't. I just didn't want that to go unnoticed publicly because that was awesome. That was the first one I've, uh, attended and I got to take my, my son. And he, well firstly, he loved the playground and that big hill. That was like, you know, the piece de resistance for him. But it was just, it was awesome. It was just a, a cool experience to see those little kiddos and all the great, things that the early childhood program is doing. The art was awesome. There were cool little popsicle trucks and ice cream trucks out in the parking lot. So, kudos to all the teachers over at early childhood for a great exhibit and, uh, parents for getting their kids there because it was a very hot day. So, very good.
All right. Good stuff. All right. Well, thank you, everybody. I think that is our meeting for tonight. All right. I'll call us adjourned at 9:01.
Thank you.
Great meeting.